Good evening, welcome to the October 20th. Evening of the Forest of City Planning Board. We have a full board this evening.
Recording in progress.
The recording is in progress. First item on the agenda is. Board discussion regulatory amendments and other matters. I'd like to clarify, that's actually, those are actually my words and other matters only means Planning Board matters, not, you know, what you had for dinner, or, you know, how the tides might come tomorrow, anything like that. So. We did want to talk about the Planning Board rules briefly, and possibly have that teed up for next month to amend those, to bring them into conformance with the new statute on finding the fact. And anything else that members might notice. Council Moro noticed one thing earlier today, so did Vice Chair Clark, and Jane also had some, several things she'd noticed in there. So if anybody would like to discuss those, we can discuss those now, or. Get the notice going for next month and bring them all up at once.
So do you anticipate this will be a one-shot edit, or was this be a, like, we haven't seen what you're proposing yet, so.
Well, I'm not proposing anything other than what I sent. I think we have to make the change on the findings of fact. And I did send that to everybody. It was in red. Those are pretty simple. Legal has only glanced at them. They think they're okay, but they'll do, you know, they'll make sure that everything's okay there before next month. And the, what happens on a tie vote is also clarified, because that's been incorrect in our rules previously. There's, procedurally, on the public hearing process, the thing Council of Moro noticed was, after the public hearing is closed, there's not supposed to be interaction with the public. Read the rules and see there's a, right now, there's a possible option for that. I don't know if we want that or not. That's not the way we've been running things. So I think it's a good idea to clean that up. Another one that Corey noticed was the, actually, the vote for chair is supposed to be secret ballot unless you vote proceeding to say it's not going to be by secret ballot. I don't have a feeling one way or the other about that, but that's something else to take a look at.
And isn't the chair, I'm sorry, excuse me, supposed to be voted on annually, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Every first of the year. So I'm not sure what, I know you had a number of things. Do you want to bring those up, Jane, or do you want to?
I don't know if I can remember all of them.
You don't have to.
But, for instance, if the members are being appointed by city council versus the mayor, that's a very different process. Board members, how board members are appointed. It was my understanding, it's through the mayor, but. And then I believe I had comments on the roles of the board chair, the role of the secretary. I think I had edit, you know, edited some comments in there about those two things.
Okay, why don't we propose this. If you can send your proposed edits to the Planning Director and myself, she and I'll get together before the notice has to go out for the next month. And we just have to touch on what will be discussed, not the specifics. So it'll leave room to, you know, won't bind us into any particular, it's not like a zoning amendment, where we have to propose the language. We just have to say, this is what we're going to be talking about. And it's also, it's not a public hearing. That was my mistake. It's just at a regular meeting. So we'll plan to do that next month, if that makes sense.
And so you'll convey, like Ms. Moro's and my comments also to?
Yes.
Okay.
And any other, yes?
I just want to state that I know governance is taking a look at how all members of all boards are being appointed, and that's control of the city council. So we can't change in our rules how that happens. We just have to make sure it matches what the council policy is. That's all.
There were other things that'll come up perhaps later, that actually, some of the items on tonight's agenda made me notice possible zoning changes that aren't significant, like the zoning map, one of our zoning maps. And I think the subdivision regulations and site plan regulations need, we need to just do diligence and go through them. There are, they haven't been looked at in a while. I know site plan definitely needs to be addressed, subdivision maybe not, but I think we need to look at it as a full board. So depending on, again, I'll talk with the Planning Director and we'll see what we think, how substantive, how much work is there, whether we need a special meeting, or we can just fit it in the next regular meeting. What were those things? Yes?
I just wanted to mention the master plan. According to RSA 674-3, the Planning Board is responsible for preparing, amending, and adopting the municipality's master plan. And so I think we really need to decide, you know, do we want to review priority sections at this point, and what are those decided as a group? I think that there is a timeline that needs to be created, a master plan committee, and also a discussion and a process for how we can have an independent consultant with experience in master planning help us through that process.
Planning Director and I actually discussed that earlier today. Bethany, would you like to?
Glad to. So I've requested as part of this year CIP. It's, you're absolutely right, it is useful to have a professional consultant support the development of a master plan. And in addition to having staff dedicated to that long-range planning effort, I've asked for funding for next year and the subsequent year for the purpose of a master plan development. I think it is timely. You are correct when you say that there ought to be sort of a, sort of steering committee of sorts. Usually, having done a couple at this point in my career, usually it begins with a broad public outreach exercise. You don't get into the actual policy work. And so I think the first steps, I think I've asked for $50,000 next year, we'll see if that gets approved, and then subsequent to that, another $100,000 to begin the public outreach process and begin the draft policy development. So it would begin with a public involvement plan. We would also potentially charter the project to get a sense of what the governance of that project might look like. It could include a steering committee. That would very likely include Planning Board members. And then after that, we would begin the outreach, which would be dictated by the public involvement plan. Typically, that includes, you know, meeting people where they are. It includes some technology-type activities, stakeholder meetings, focus groups, surveys, attending farmers' markets with exhibits, and really sort of getting a handle on the direction we have with some very specific questions. That public involvement plan will span the entire development of the master plan. And you're absolutely right, there should be a steering committee, and there should be consultant selection, all, I think are the, some of the first steps in moving that forward. Usually, it's a multi-year project, but the public outreach component, because it does reflect the emerging values and the shifting priorities of the community, and it really, we have come to understand that that public outreach component probably is one of the most important parts of updating the master plan. And certainly, the scope of that can be guided by this Planning Board.
I'm wondering, in the interim, can we reconcile the current master plan and maybe go through it as a Planning Board commission, as well as public input, to determine completeness of some of the components in that master plan, as well as just reviewing projects that have begun and are maybe underway? And maybe we can start that sooner rather than later, so that by the time we have CIP approval for some of those funds, we'll be in a better position to then take immediate action thereafter?
Andrew, I think that, you know, I missed a very important step, that I think you kind of hit on it. Every planning process begins with these existing conditions. You cannot say where you're going if you can't identify where you are. So I know for the Climate Action Plan, there is a strong involvement by the Sustainability Committee in developing those existing conditions, and I can definitely share some examples. So working through existing conditions might be a good first effort, and it usually involves understanding regulatory context, local context, trends, demographics, all the things that you would want to, you know, get a sense of. And also legislative imperatives that have been adopted. So I think that could be folded into that very first exercise, and it would inform the subsequent phases.
Particularly for the points that probably some of us, including myself, were not involved in that master plan exercise previously. And so just getting a background and stable foundation to proceed and have viable and valuable contributions to the next steps would be huge. And even involving maybe some public review type of input, where we get people commenting on certain aspects, if it's a certain neighborhood that has had a lot of work done, and maybe commenting on their impact and what they've seen. So kind of like a boots-on-the-ground type of perspective that we may not otherwise get a chance to do.
Yes, and I think, just a point of clarification, CIP, it is in the CIP, but it has to get through the CIP, and then it has to get through the budget, and it has to get appropriated by council. So the funds aren't actually available for anything until it goes through the entire process. So it's a little bit of a ways out, and I'm not going to try to predict the council's action on that. But one thing I would really like to see the Planning Board involved in is public outreach and possibly having some feedback. There's been a lot of development in town the last 10 years, and getting some feedback with images for what people think of development. You know, what we may have is opinions for nine to 10 people is one thing, but if the public really likes certain things and really doesn't like certain other things, we ought to know that. And that can help guide things like the master plan and the regulatory modifications we talk about. So, you know, more information.
Just one more suggestion. I really like that idea. Andrew, I don't understand why we can't start kind of gathering the citywide perspective about what the vision is and what the intended growth rate is now. And one thing that I thought of was, we have these citywide neighborhood committees that meet ward by ward that are ongoing. It seems like that would be also a great forum. It wouldn't cost anything extra, since it's already ongoing, where we could start to show people, you know, images of the development that's already occurred in the different sectors of town, including anything that is, you know, impacting or within that specific ward, and start to gather information there.
So are you two offering to work on a subcommittee to talk about ideas how to do some of this?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Let's do that. Anything else? Yes, Jane?
Speaking of CIP, I was hoping maybe we could get an update of where that stands. Where's the process in the CIP stand right now?
I'd be glad to do that. We are working through, I think, I believe the date is set for the subcommittee meeting, but we're trying to finalize the date. I believe that is going to be in December, that the Planning Board Subcommittee, or actually, it's the Planning Board Advisory Committee, will meet and review that. We are adding an additional public sort of review of that through a council subcommittee, and that will take place in November. And then it will, they'll sort of take the first look at the citizen requests, and that'll be the primary objective of that sort of first review. It will then come to the subcommittee after it goes to, through that, the city council. It'll come to the advisory committee after the council in December. And then they will work on it and ultimately deliver a recommendation to council about the CIP, which will be adopted, I believe, in April, and then considered as part of the budget moving towards July.
So new for this year is a subcommittee from the council, instead of just the Planning Board Subcommittee?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just curious, why do we feel the need for that?
I will let City Manager address that.
Sure. We will speak about it at the upcoming October 24th city council meeting. It's one of the city council goals to have more community engagement, and to more fully vet and speak publicly about the citizen requests that we receive. This year was a banner year. We received more than double in years past. So we want to walk people through the processes. We know it, explain what can and cannot be part of a CIP. Some of these requests will be ones that are already included. Some are not CIP eligible, but we want to give the citizens a sense of where their requests went and how we're treating them. So that, we want to make sure there's enhanced, transparency is not the right word, it's more enhanced.
Communication.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor. So that will be new this year, and we'll be talking about that more Monday night.
Anything else on this first topic? Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from September 15th. Anybody have any comments?
I do.
Yes?
At hour, hour two, 21 minutes and 21 seconds, I requested that Ben Fletcher's presentation be included in the minutes. And that comment was not in the minutes, and Ben Fletcher's presentation was not in the minutes. So just wondering how best to correct that. I need some help, because last time I tried to amend the minutes, it didn't work out, because I didn't phrase it properly. So I want to make sure I get it right this time, as far as, do I need a motion, or how do I correct this?
I do recall you asking for that, unless I'm dreaming things.
I can't recall that we've ever attached a presentation to the minutes. We definitely, I think, post them, but if.
Request.
Oh, the request, I think you would just, if they're, if you feel like it was in, that you didn't capture something, I think you could.
No, it was pretty simple. I just, because I thought it would've been helpful to have Ben's presentation in the packet before the meeting. And I want the public and the Planning Board to have that presentation to review in the future. So that's my intent here. I just don't know how, best way to do it.
Well, we did, I believe we did post the presentation to the website, so it's not posted?
It has not been posted.
Okay. So I think that we, if we did not get it posted, we absolutely can get that posted, Jim. Would that sort of satisfy that public opportunity to go back and review that presentation, or do you want it actually attached to the minutes?
Well, yeah, my intent is to make it public, any way, the best way possible.
We can, we should have already done that. So my apologies if that was a request and we did not get that posted. We don't always, I think the general rule that I've provided with staff is that if the presentation introduces new information that's not in the memo, that it really should be included with the packet, but, you know, if it's providing content. But if it's a review and sort of an aid to the content that's in the memo, that typically I would say that it can be separate, but it's always useful to post it to help the public navigate that memo. So I apologize if that wasn't posted. We can get it posted.
Okay, so can I amend these minutes by saying that I requested that at the last meeting, and that that presentation will be posted? Then, can I amend the minutes that way for me?
The minutes should reflect that you made the request.
Mm-hmm.
And I think you responded it would be posted.
Yes.
Or Ben did. I forget who did that. So is that folks' recollection? Is that accurate?
It is.
Okay.
So that was a motion to amend. Is there a second for that little?
Second. Second.
Any discussion?
I just.
Yes?
Like to make a request, when we get and have those types of presentations, that we get those in advance. It can be by email when we're here even, just so we can pull them up on our iPads, because it's hard to see it from here for me.
The large text files are easy, but the maps and things are really hard on that screen.
We will endeavor to get that to you earlier.
Thank you. It's hard to follow along, by the way.
Not even going to call for votes. So amended. Anything else?
That's it.
We have two items for determination of completeness. Request of Randy and Jeff Collins as owners and applicants for property at 77 Meredith Way, requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval to subdivide one lot, one existing lot into two lots. And a request of Richard Bazeggi as owner for property at 201 Kierzai's, requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval to subdivide one existing lot into three lots. Have a motion to accept these applications as complete?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Application's accepted. We have a request for postponement under old business, a request of, is it Blues, or Bless, Larry Family Living Trust as owner for property at 225 Wybird Street, requesting conditional use permit approval as permitted under section 1081440 of the zoning ordinance to construct an attached accessory dwelling unit. Said property is located in Assessor's Map 133 Lot 54 in the General Residence A District. This is a request for postponement.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That, to clarify, that'll be continued to the next meeting, correct?
Yes, that is my understanding. They, yep. It will be on the next agenda.
Under new business, we have a request of Coventry Realty LLC as owner for property located at 111 State Street, requesting a conditional use permit. Approval in accordance with section 10.1112.14 of the zoning ordinance to allow zero parking spaces where 35 are required. Property is located in Assessor's Map 107 Lot 50, and lies within the character district CD4 and Historic District. LU 22-125. Who's here to speak to this application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board, John Shagnon from Amet Engineering, speaking on behalf of the applicant, Coventry Realty. The applicant is here tonight, and also with us is Tracy Kozak, project architect. So 111 State Street, tax map 107, Lot 50, is in the CD4 Historic District, not in the downtown overlay district. And we're here for a parking CUP application for the number of parking spaces under 10.1112.14. The site is currently developed, and there is a plan in the set that shows the site. It's currently a developed site with no parking. The applicant purchased the two lots, combined them, and wants to bring the building together. The building requires some renovation, and that was made clear by the Fire Department and Planning Department. You should have a memo that is dated today, that they did do a walkthrough of the site with the new owner, and determined that there were multiple code issues that needed to be addressed. So we're basically here to bring this building up to fire and building code conformance by constructing an elevator and access tower addition on the Chief Street side. So the property is bounded by State Street, Chapel Street, and Chief Street in the back. This line here was the line that did separate the two lots, but it's now combined. And the applicant is bringing the building together as one building, putting in one stair tower to provide for life safety, elevator access, ADA access, and code compliance. That compliance is under section 10.323 of the zoning ordinance, which allows buildings that need additions to become code compliant to be able to get those without going through site review. So normally, this would, as it is in addition to a commercial building, go through a site review, but the ordinance allows for building additions, minor additions that are required for code compliance, access, and safety, to be able to proceed without site review. The review by the city did note that a parking CUP is required. That's why we are here. The applicant is looking to convert some of the restaurant space into much-needed housing as a part of this overall redevelopment. So some of the restaurant space on the second floor, east side, is going to be converted to residential space. And some of the space on the third floor that was support space for the restaurant use and did have a residence is going to be also converted to additional residences. So there's a reduction in the restaurant square footage, and an increase in the number of residential units at the site. That conversion of space reduces both the required parking and the parking demand at the site. So while we are here for a parking CUP, the net result of this project is we are reducing parking and parking demand. Required parking being the parking required under the ordinance, and parking demand being the estimated parking that is required at any particular time in the day, based on industry standard generation rates. The required parking under the ordinance is going from 80 spaces to 69, so it is a reduction of 11 spaces. And the parking demand is going from 58 vehicles to 52. We submitted information that calculates that. It's in your package. The vehicle parking demand is also not taking into account that the rates of parking are not the same peak. The residential use parking demand peak is 10 p.m., and the restaurant peak is between 5 and 9. So that number really should be even smaller. The Planning Department reviewed and found that the ordinance required this conformance because, parking CUP, because of the proposed change in use. So the change in the use, not the use itself, but the amount of the change in the use. The first floor of the project, and we can go to the architectural plans if need be, but that first-floor use is not changing at all, except for the access in the back that is required to make the second floor come to code, to provide ADA access and stairway egress to the second floor. So therefore, our required CUP relief that was noticed and is before you, 35 spaces, is based on calculating the changes in use. What is the parking required for the change in use? So we have here the first-floor plan, and in gray. There we go. That's the area of the stairway and elevator addition. The next floor shows two apartments, shows the addition in the back. And this part of the building was restaurant space. And so the next floor shows three apartments on the top floor. There was apartment here, which was larger, and then office space for the restaurant. The criteria for your approval are included in the packet. I'd be glad to go through them, and we probably should. You are allowed to adopt and grant a parking CUP if the application includes parking demand demonstrating that the proposed number of off-street parking spaces is sufficient for the proposed use. So this is kind of a unique application in that it doesn't have parking now, it's not going to have parking, but the parking demand analysis that we've attached shows that the proposed improvements will decrease the parking demand at the property. And I would submit that that demonstrates that the off-street parking is sufficient, because it is now. Next, we have to provide evidence-based measures to show a reduction in parking demand. And the evidence-based measure in this particular application is that the proposed improvements themselves are going to decrease the parking demand. Further all, the number of off-street parking spaces required should be adequate and appropriate for the use of the property. Once again, since parking in the area is currently sufficient for the existing use, and the proposed improvements will decrease the demand, we submit that the parking is adequate. And then, as you know, in the ordinance, you have the discretion to require more or less parking, which is not particularly applicable to this application. Again, though, we would say that the reduction in both required parking and parking demand meets the intent of the ordinance. And we ask that you approve this application tonight. I don't know if anybody else from the team wants to say anything, but I will take and answer any questions you might have about this project.
Questions of the applicant?
Sure.
Yes?
Mr. Shagnon, I understand that this lot is non-conforming. Is that true, based on setbacks?
Yes.
And?
Certain setbacks, yes. Yep.
Typically, in that situation, you're not allowed to make it more non-conforming. Is that true?
Well, in particular, this application is, is and was determined to fall under Article 3, section 10.323 of the Portsmouth ordinance. You familiar with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And it says that modifications-
And it says that modifications to lawful non-conforming building or structures may be enlarged or expanded in non-conformity provided that the modification is necessary to comply with the applicable code. And specifically installation or replacement of components required for egress purposes pursuant to the building code are in that section.
Okay. So based on your description, I noted that this property will be increasing occupied area from 8,303 feet to 9,212. Is that accurate?
Building footprint?
No, the occupied area, floor area.
I guess it depends on your definition of occupied.
Well, I guess I'm just going off the sheet. That was provided by Arkove.
Yep.
Do you want to speak to that, Tracy?
Sure. Tracy Kozak, Arkove Architects. Some of that floor area increase is the corridor to allow the occupied apartments to access the elevator and egress stair. There's also a small portion of the third floor that was labeled as attic on the plan and we are proposing to have that as part of the apartment. But primarily, it's the, you can see there's a corridor between the elevator and the staircase and some of the connections to allow all these spaces to egress safely.
Okay. So in summary, this building will increase in occupied area by about 909 square feet. And all that area is related to the egress, the elevator and the stairway and how to get there?
Half of it is the corridors on four levels between the stair and the elevator. And then, as I mentioned, on the third floor, there's a small portion of attic behind, it's on the 111 side, on the corner of Schaeff, which will become an apartment.
But again, all that area, that 909 square feet, you're allowed to increase the non-conformance because all that area is related to egress?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So another clarification I just hope you can help me with is when the project is finished, you'll have 9,212 feet of occupied area. Now, is that equivalent to the living area in the Portsmouth tax cards? Would that be a similar number?
I'm not understanding your reference of the tax card.
Yeah, you know, when the assessing department has living area as part of their tax cards, I just wonder if that's an equivalent designation?
The new building is a little bit bigger than the old building because we're filling in the courtyard with the egress corridors, stair and elevator. So it will be a little different than what it is right now.
All right. So you're saying that what you call occupied floor area is different than the living area in Portsmouth tax cards?
Oh, I see. I don't know how the tax card calculates it, but when we calculate it, it is to the, in these instances, it is to the outside face of the outside wall and the demising walls between units are down the center.
Okay. Again, I don't know the answer myself, that's why I'm asking.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's up to the assessor to assign the space. We can't speak to what the assessor will say the square footage is. And I'm sure the assessor would try to recapture all of the building's square footage and assign parts of it, pieces and parts to units. Does that help to answer the question? The difference between the unit size and the total footprint?
I guess I'm confused. I'm trying to have, what's the issue with the?
Well, where we're heading with this is that I'm trying to make sure that all this increase in areas related to the egress. Because the tax card has the occupied floor area slash living area, 7,821 square feet. And you have about 500 square feet more.
So again, we can't speak to how the assessor measured the building, what the tax card says. I believe that the architect's measurements, though, are more accurate based on existing condition, building surveys, and CAD-generated square footages. I don't know how the assessor came up with the square footage. They may even be net square footages. I'm not sure. I know the answer to that.
John, is the footprint of the proposal basically the same as existing except for the bump out, if you will, for the elevator?
Yes, yes, there are no other exterior changes.
So the exterior, the footprint is the same other than what's required for life safety? Is that, is that accurate?
Yes.
I think it's important to make that distinction between the non-conforming building, which was exempt because of the changes to the footprint were required by the building and fire code, and the uses inside, which are all permitted uses, but that because the expansion and change to the use, the use brought with it the parking. The uses are all conforming uses within the district. It's the parking that was attached to the use. So there's non-conforming uses and structures. And so in this case, there was both, but the non-conforming structure was exempted by the fire deputy fire chief and the building official.
But in order to get that exception, the extra living area or occupied area has to be only for the stairway and how to get there, correct?
So what, let me see if I can explain how it was explained to me and John can jump in as well. I spoke to the deputy fire chief and also the building official. When the buildings were merged, there was no investment. They would allow for anything in that building until it was, it is longstanding not been up to code. They needed that building to come into complete compliance. And I understand from the building official, this building is now fully fire compliant with the fire code and the building code and that they would not allow any other changes until that second stairwell was added, with two exits are required for the restaurant use and that fully satisfied that. No new changes would be allowed in that building until those things got fixed. So it was required prior to any change. So that is the non-conforming structure question. Inside, the uses are completely allowed, uses within the zone. They can make changes all day long, but the changes that they made in this case did enlarge one of the uses and did reduce the other. So I think a conservative view of that, even though the mix of uses is essentially the same, there was a change and we have a very, we don't have thresholds for that change in our code that say changes that essentially bring it into greater conformance are exempt. We don't have that. We just say a change requires conformity. We don't have a threshold for investment. So we applied what we thought would be a reasonable sort of threshold for compliance to address the changes that were on the second floor and the third floor, the new residential.
I guess the bottom line is, I'm not convinced that all the extra areas part of this project is related to egress. That's where I am at right now.
I understand.
Well, I think that is based on the tax card with a lower number. And I'm having a problem reconciling the difference. I'm with the applicant. We have an architect and an engineer who have surveyed the exterior and interior of this building, telling us of the certain size. And the tax card may be an error, you know, which is entirely possible. Tax, I don't mean to disparage the assessors, you know, but it happens. And we don't have yet, we may before the night is over, but we don't yet have somebody, a licensed professional, saying, hey, it's a 15,000 square foot building. I doubt we're going to have that. So the parking calculations for comparative purposes has been based on the larger number. If the parking calculations were based on the smaller number, that might be an issue.
Yeah, my discussion is really independent of parking at this point. So that's where my questions were leading with. So I'm off the parking thing right now. I'm just talking about the expansion and the making a non-conforming structure more non-conforming by expanding it in ways that aren't related to egress.
But if the footprint doesn't expand, it's not expanding. They're finishing off interior. They're finishing off interior space and that's allowed, that's not considered.
So increasing the occupied space would not increase the non-conformance?
No, not for, the footprint stays the same and that's the regulatory issue in the code. It's not changing the setbacks, it's not changing coverage.
Mr. Chairman, we happen to have the assessor on Zoom because she's waiting to be part of a discussion further on the agenda. She's willing to come on and address this if the board so chooses.
I really, I prefer not to go down that rabbit hole, to use an expression I don't like to use. I really think we've got numbers we can and should rely on. And actually, it's, in my opinion, irrelevant because we're looking at a project that is reducing an overall parking demand and that's the only non-conformity that is really the subject, that's why they're here. So, but I'm talking too much. Who else wants to speak?
If I might, I'm not sure.
Just one second, one second, John.
Sorry.
Greg?
Ladies first.
Okay. I just wanted to ask if the parking demand analysis includes the outdoor dining area? Because it is like an expansion of the restaurant. It shows on all of your site plans or, and your diagrams, so?
I don't believe it shows on the site plan. The outdoor dining is a licensed thing that the city grants to folks, in particular during COVID and as we still deal with that. That may go away. I'm not sure I understand the question. It's based on the square footage of the building. Nobody is required to provide parking calculations based on how much they license from the city for outdoor dining.
Then could you explain how you get to the 2,827 square foot calculation by which you did your peak period of demand analysis for the restaurant piece of?
Sure.
The parking? Does it exclude the kitchen?
No. So if you look at the first floor plan, the second floor plan, which is? When that comes up, and you have it in your package. So the proposed second-floor plan shows the restaurant square footage in yellow, 2,827 square feet, provided by the architect and?
And what about the first floor?
Okay. So the first floor does not change at all.
So this is just a calculation of that change?
Correct. So?
Okay, that's why I could never rectify that.
Sorry, I wasn't clearer about that. But the ordinance requirement that we come into compliance as determined by the staff, which is appropriately determined, if we're not changing anything, we don't need to come into compliance. So there's no change to the first floor, square footage of use.
Right, but these 52 vehicles are 52 additional vehicles to the current parking demand for that?
Actually, no.
Restaurant, correct?
No. The parking demand currently is 58 vehicles. So we're reducing the parking demand. Currently, the building requires more parking. And if you want to add the first floor in, you're going to get an additive on either side. So it's de minimis because you're adding to the existing and you're adding to the proposed, so.
They cancel each other out.
Cancel each other out. What we're talking about is what's changed and the changed has to come more into conformance to the ordinance. Even though we're reducing the parking demand, the ordinance as written requires that we be here to get your permission to reduce the parking demand. So we kind of asked for your help here on that and you might want to, well?
John, on your, the residential component of your parking calculations? It looked like you used the number of units as your independent variable. Is that correct?
Can you bring up the page of the parking? Parking demand, the parking calc, the parking calc is based on the Portsmouth ordinance. So the unit size and the corresponding required parking. So there's, there you go. So it's kind of hard to see.
I meant for your eyes.
At that size, but if you look at the, at the table, the middle part is proposed and then there's apartment number, occupied floor area, and then the required parking. So you have 1.3, 1.0, .5, .5, 1.0. Those are right out, the five units require that number of spaces right out of your ordinance requirement for parking.
I understand that. I meant your ITE comparison is what I meant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. So the parking demand came from the ITE and we updated to the fifth generation, or fifth edition, I'm sorry. And we used land use code 220, multifamily housing low-rise. You're familiar with that? I'm sure you know the definition is apartments, townhomes and condominiums located within the same building with at least three other dwelling units with one or two levels of residence. So that's the one that we used for the demand.
And you used number of units or did you use number of bedrooms?
So we used dwelling units.
I think that'll give you a higher number than if you use bedrooms.
Okay. So it's 1.21 per dwelling unit. I guess depends on the bedroom count in the end, where you would land with that. But I felt that that was an appropriate.
One of the units is two bedrooms and the rest are one bedroom, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know off the top of my head. I can't say.
Is one of them?
People are nodding their heads, so. I'm sorry.
Is one of them considered a microunit by square footage allotment?
Yes, the .5, I think, because it's, there's one that requires only half a space.
Therefore, it's half a space.
Yep. So I think it will bring more housing. It's good reuse of the building. If this was in the downtown overlay district, what would, how would it be considered differently?
So it would need four less parking spaces?
Because of residential?
So you get a reduction of four?
Bonus of four.
All right, I think I've determined the error of my logic on my last discussion. So I was confusing buildable internal area with dimensional setback of the footprint of the building.
That's what I thought.
So I apologize for that waste of time. But you couldn't increase the building footprint only for the egress, but you can allow larger areas within the building?
Yes.
Unrelated to egress?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Settles that.
Greg?
So my only challenge here is that we're lumping the parking need of residential and restaurant into one total calculation. And, you know, you're increasing the residential fivefold, which is, I guess I'll use the word more intense. In other words, people that are in a residential unit need parking seven days a week, 365 days a year, including the days when we have parking bans. People parking for restaurants don't. So while I'm okay with reducing or just leaving the fact that the restaurant has zero parking spaces because there's more parking spaces in downtown than, I don't even know. But I would be willing to drive from, I mean, to walk from Market Square to this restaurant. But I wouldn't be willing to walk from the Foundry Place garage to my apartment. And having, increasing the number of dwelling units without adding a single parking space, I just don't see it. It doesn't work for me. I mean, you're using one parking space for, per every hundred square feet to calculate residential, but it's a more intense, I mean, to calculate restaurants. But then when you come over here to residential?
Thank you. This is discussion, this is board discussion?
Yes.
Right now, we're questioning the applicant. I do have a thought about that. And my thought is that in order to provide parking, building would have to go away or have to go underground, which is extraordinarily expensive. So, you know, what might be considered workforce housing opportunities on State Street would disappear. So that's?
That's another question, if I may. In the verbiage, you basically commit to using this residential use for restaurant employees, but yet is that going to be restricted somehow in the deeds? And are you going to continue to use that for restaurant employees in perpetuity? Or is this just something that you put in for the first week?
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, I'm Mark McNabb. To answer your question, Greg, when we build microapartments, it is the least marketable unit out there.
out there. They don't have washers and dryers. A number of them will have Murphy beds. They're by inherently, they draw the lowest rent. Just think of it from a consumer, you know, would you rent one for the same amount with a washer?
As a landlord, I disagree because I can rent the studio for more money per square foot than I can a three-bedroom apartment.
Well, I, that's not my funding. So, so, you know, in terms of my experience, this is not being sold as putting deed restrictions in. It's not required. The other thing I think is very important that has not been mentioned, this is really important as you consider it. This building has no use without that conversion to residential. The prior uses of this non-conforming building, this building is one of the worst, was one of the worst buildings I have ever seen in my career downtown. It was so non-conforming, it was so out of code. We could never have a restaurant in that portion of the building on the second floor or office. They require two code complying exits. We do not have that on that side. We had none. So we're building one full code complying exit. There is only one use on those portions that you see going to residential. And that's the only use permitted on that second floor and third floor by International Building Code and NFPA and International Fire Code. The only use that's allowed to have only one exit is a residential use. A restaurant and an office cannot. So we're in a dilemma. The dilemma we are in, if we don't get a parking CUP, those floors are vacant. They're no use. This will continue on to the BOA or Superior Court. So it's important to understand that this problem with this building is that it can only be residential on the second floor. We can only get one code complying stair tower.
You're familiar with the fact that economic hardship is not a criteria for a CUP? So leaving those floors vacant is not our problem.
You can feel that way. So I'm telling the board right now that we're here for a parking CUP for residential. We only can get one code complying stair tower. So.
Thank you. Any other questions for, to develop? Are the applicant's team, yes?
Mr. McNabb, I'm having a little trouble grasping the equivalency of a restaurant parking spot with a residential parking spot. I know they're considered equal, but to me, they're vastly different. And trading them as if they're equal, I, I'm having a hard time. Can you, can you tell me why I should, should consider a residential parking spot less intensive than residential, a restaurant spot?
Well, I, I can't comment other than what the zoning requires you to provide your table for restaurant use, office use, and residential use. Your zoning ordinances require a number of spaces per use, not what we're saying. In, from the city of Portsmouth's calculation for a restaurant use or an office use or a residential use, assembly use for a restaurant is more parking than residential. So to answer your question, it's the zoning ordinance that we go off of the table, the parking requirement on the table. And, you know, a lot of these buildings there, the front of these buildings are, you know, 1800, the front of 111 is 1791. You know, these, these buildings are, are tough. They were never built with any cars. And, you know, it's, it's difficult to use them for certain uses that are going to require cars.
Okay. Anything else? Any of the applicant?
Yeah, just to further clarify, your own ordinance treats parking spaces in a number of ways. There's the absolute calculation, but there's also the shared use table. And the shared use table outlines how parking spaces have different uses. And the residential use is listed there as 100% occupied at nighttime. And the restaurant goes down, I don't have it in front of me, but a much lower percentage, maybe even to zero really, if you think about it. So we're not trading spaces, but what we're telling you is that we're reducing the demand at the peak time and we're reducing the requirement under the ordinance for the parking spaces. It's a reduction. Does that answer the question somewhat?
Peter?
I just don't see how you see it. Is it a reduction when you have at least five apartments with the spaces that are, need overnight use and?
Because nobody's at the restaurant overnight, so you're sharing the spaces.
Those spaces aren't getting decreased. Those spaces are needed. And there's other residents in neighborhoods nearby and there that, I mean, that, 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 those aren't going away. Those, you're adding five residents needing parking after hours at a minimum.
I think, I'm not going to really debate that, but just say if you drove around Portsmouth during the pandemic, you would have seen the number of actual downtown residents that needed parking. Because nobody was coming to the downtown. There was plenty of parking. So the resident parking is a small percentage of the overall parking. So if you're reducing the restaurant demand, you're assisting the residents in being able to find parking.
Do we need any other clarification from the applicant before the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing now. Public hearing is open. Anybody here wish to speak to or for against this application? Anybody online? There is, or? Bill Downey on Zoom? Are you there, Bill?
Bill Downey on Zoom?
Your name is on the screen.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. This is Bill Downey from 67.
TV's on or something.
This is Bill Downey from 67 Bow Street.
Go ahead.
Okay. First I'd like to say is that I'm sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, please go ahead.
I'm sorry, I've got a little back, back feet here. I can say with great confidence that there's been a long history at this location where there's been residents without parking. It was my personal first apartment above Red Door back in late eighties. And there was two apartments in 107. There was a B and B above the cafe Petronella with no parking. I think it's, it's a tough argument to say that it's less impactful for parking. But I feel this would be a great addition to town to provide the CUP. Because there's great need for these smaller apartments. And although that it would add a little bit of parking, there's just no way that the developer can add that. And to have that vacant would be unfortunate. But in the end of the day, I just feel like this has been a good project. I got a tour of the building. It was absolutely rotten and it's pretty tight. No surprise there. Mark does really good work. But I think under the circumstances, these micro apartments are in great need. And I think it would be a great addition to town. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to or for against this application? Anybody else on Zoom? I'm going to close the public hearing. Now we can have board discussion.
Would you like a motion?
Jim?
If I might, once again, I find myself with an application in front of us that, that checks all the boxes and is very straightforward in its request. The use is, the conversion of the use of that small amount of space is less intense parking wise. It's, it's clear to me that it is. And a lot of the questions about how we feel about parking or our interpretation about parking, I think are moot because the calculations and the design specifically were done with our own zoning language in, in mind. So we're basically questioning ourselves when we, when we start to question some of these parking counts, I feel. I feel it's a very straightforward application. I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
If we were to draw a direct comparison, I can say with almost certainty that the condos above the Rose Restaurant, 70 State Street, also do not have parking. And those were for sale and they were anywhere from 890 square feet to 12 to 1300 square feet. And those were for sale and sold without parking. And these units are a different use, more conducive to micro living and are a direct benefit to the communal need in the building of the restaurant for restaurant employees, which is, you know, actively marketed and working on achieving that. So to me, it's a pretty seamless operation and I absolutely think that building was in disrepair and would otherwise be sitting there still. Sure, economic hardship is not necessarily a reason or justification, but without that improvement and without the new residences, this building sits idle. And we've seen the successful coexisting of these uses before. And to me, this is a lesser impactful way. And Chief Street is not new to slim parking demand or slim parking inventory, rather. So it's a, it's a pretty straightforward proposal in my head. Yeah.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to find that the conditional use permit application meets the criteria set forth in section 10.111, 2.14, and adopt the findings of fact as presented in the staff memo.
Would you like to explain your motion, Corey?
So as other board members have spoken, I think, you know, I think this, this conditional use permit is appropriate and for, for the space. I mean, if you were just a block away in the downtown overlay district, the four residential spaces would be automatically waived. So you know, I think, as others had said, I think, you know, having five spaces other than just one giant penthouse is a great use of the space. And, you know, historically, as we've heard, that the site has also operated in a similar fashion with residential uses and hasn't been a problem in the past. So being able to bring a building up to code and at the same time, you know, bring some life back into it, I think is a great thing. So I am, yeah, that is why I'm putting the motion forth.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I mean, I, I agree, and I think that, you know, fire safety and life safety are real issues. Parking is a little bit more esoteric. If somebody has to walk a few extra hundred yards to find their parked vehicle, that's one thing. But if the building's on fire, that's quite a different thing. So the fact that this building's been brought up to code is a big, big, huge issue, I think, for me anyway. We have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You have your CUP.
Oh, no, we have another vote.
Oh, that's for the finding of fact. I'm sorry.
That was the findings of fact. We have another vote. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to find that the number of off-street parking spaces provided will be adequate and appropriate for the proposed use of the property and to grant the conditional use permit as presented.
Second.
Anything you wish to add?
Nothing additional.
Same. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Now you have your CUP. We have a request of, Neil, Revocable Trust as owner for property 124 Kensington Road, requesting a wetland conditional use permit approval and according to section 101017 of the zoning ordinance, the demolition of the detached garage and construction of a new attached garage, a 59 square foot increase of impervious area totaling 4,320 square feet of wetland buffer impact on the property. This property is shown in accessory map 152 lot 20 and lies within the single-family residence B, SRB District, LU 22-138. Who is here to speak to this application?
Good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Eric Sari from Altus Engineering on Court Street. I'm here on behalf of the Alett family. I have Darlene here with me tonight. Talk about 124 Kensington Street, which you see on the plan here. This house was originally built in 1910, I believe, so it's been there for quite a while. It has a detached garage in its current state and it backs up to a rather sizable wetland. This wetland does extend over into Peter Laughlin's tree farm. A portion of it is in conservation. And with the wetland and the wetland buffer, 81% of the lot is encumbered. You can see on the plan here. Here we go. This little sliver right there is the only area that's outside the building setbacks and outside the wetland buffer itself. So this would be a non-conforming, well, a completely non-buildable lot under current zoning. And right now, almost the entire thing is non-conforming. So what the proposal in front of you is, is to tear down the existing garage, which is starting to show its age. It's not dilapidated, but it's definitely, definitely elderly. And add a new attached garage, which you see on the plan here. In doing so, we intend to reduce impervious surfaces. All the new stuff, the new pavement, walkways and whatnot will be pervious or permeable to allow stormwater treatment and infiltration. And we're also going to restore the buffer. There's about 760 square feet in behind the new garage, which you see in green here, that will be planted. It's currently all lawn or landscaping or garage. There will be no trees cut for this and no wetland impacts. It's pretty straightforward, really simple. I can go through the criteria if you'd like. You have it in your packet. It's your pleasure if you want to go through it. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant? Yes, Jim?
Yeah, I just wanted your agreement that there would be, you say that there's not going to be any impact, but you really mean no further impact since that wetland buffer is completely impacted now.
Yeah, the wetland buffer is totally impacted now. And when I'm, when I said no impact, I meant to the wetland itself.
To the wetland?
To the wetland itself, yeah.
And so will there be no impact during the demolition of the garage?
Well, there's obviously going to be impact during construction. I mean, as I said, 81% of the lot's wetland or wetland buffer. So there definitely will be impacts, which is why we're here for the CUP. But when we're done, we're going to be farther away from the wetland by about four or five feet. And we will have restored existing disturbed areas within the buffer.
I saw that. I appreciate the buffer plantings and the increase in impervious service, surface, I mean, pervious. My other, my only other question is on the site plan C2. What is the purple line there? I don't see it in the key.
That's the 25-foot no-cut zone, which really doesn't apply because there's almost nothing there anyway. So it is starting to grow up, I understand. But we're proposing a little bit of restoration, but no real site work in, in that area. And obviously not, not cutting any trees in there either because it is a no-cut buffer.
Will the buffer plantings include something substantial?
The plans include a wide variety of, what do we got? Shrubs and herbaceous plants. These were chosen for this site by a company called Site Structures. They're a landscape company. They have experience in this kind of thing. It looks like 30, if I did my math right, 30 shrubs and 84 herbaceous plants, which for that small area is pretty dense. So the intent is to make it naturalized, which will be an impediment to anybody going in there and disturbing it in the future. So the intent is long-term, as the years go on, that it will grow up and be woods again, ideally.
Any other questions? None? Okay, I guess we'll open the public hearing. Open the public hearing on this. Is there anybody here to speak to or for against this application? Anybody online? Last call. Nobody here to speak to or for against this application? End of public hearing. Board's discussion. Findings of fact?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to find that the conditional use permit application meets the criteria set forth in section 10.1017.50 and adopt the findings of fact as presented in the staff memo.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, you know, I, I think the applicant has done a good job of basically trying to provide some stormwater treatment. some stormwater treatment here. Previously, there was none. They are trying to treat some of it before it enters the wetland. And they're also moving the impervious driveway out and restoring more than 760 square feet of previously disturbed buffer area with the plantings as discussed.
Makes sense, thank you. Anything else? Ready for a motion? Or I guess a vote on the findings of fact, excuse me? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Findings of fact are adopted? Next?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to grant the wetland conditional use permit with the following condition, 2.1. Signage will be placed within the buffer or wetland itself stating that it is an environmentally sensitive wetland area. Applicant is to contact Peter Brits in the planning department, and I'm actually going to add something here other than what's in the staff memo. I'm proposing to say, Peter Brits in the planning department to coordinate placement of and to obtain signage. The memo only says to obtain signage, I figured it'd be good to have Peter help coordinate the placement of those signs. Just because it's been back and forth in the past as to where exactly those should go.
I second, I agree. Actually, I hadn't seconded yet, but I will now.
I was curious about that, okay.
And the other thing I'd just add is that the, when the condition's to be satisfied subsequent to final approval, just take out a subdivision plan, because that shouldn't be in there.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
We have a request of Peter Ward as owner for property at 15 Central Avenue requesting a conditional use permit approval. Asked permit under 1081440 of the zoning ordinance to construct an attached accessory dwelling unit. This property is shown as accessory map 209 lot 4 and lies within the single-residence B District and Highway Noise Overlay District, LU 22-123. Who is here to represent, to present this application?
Good evening, members of the board. I'm attorney Darcy Peiser with Durbin Law Office in Portsmouth. Attorney Durbin could not be here tonight, he had a conflict, so I am filling in, so on that note, please bear with me. Here with me is architect Matthew Beebe, who designed the plans for this project. And this project is being submitted on behalf of Peter Ward, who seeks a conditional use permit for construction of an attached accessory dwelling unit to his property at 15 Central Avenue in Portsmouth. The proposed accessory dwelling unit is a 725-square-foot addition, which would be located above the garage of the principal residence. The accessory dwelling unit will be used for additional living space. And so, I can go through the criteria, they're addressed in our application, but I will just kind of give a summary, and then I can answer questions as needed. So, the proposal for the accessory dwelling unit is located above the garage. It will not increase the existing footprint of the space. It's just making use of existing living, existing space. And Mr. Ward is currently in the process of proposing, seeking an addition to the second floor of his property as well. And so, this accessory dwelling unit will be completed at the same time as that addition. And the dwelling, the accessory dwelling unit will be four feet lower, the roofline of the ADU will be four feet lower than the raised roofline of the principal residence once that addition is completed. So, there will be no change to the existing footprint, which I already said. The addition will be in keeping with the aesthetics of the home, the principal residence, and also in character with the neighborhood. The materials and aesthetics of the addition will match the current house and will not keep, cause any change to the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Mr. Ward sought and received several variances in June, and the ZBA noted in their approval that the addition and the ADU will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. So, and that those variances were for expansion of a non-conforming use, which is the case because of the size and location of the property and where the principal home is situated on the property. It's very close to the setback. And so, this, on the garage side, which is where the ADU will be constructed, that, if you look on the plan, lies essentially in the middle of the lot, so there's no, there's no abutters, there's no other properties nearby there. The lot is a triangular shape, and so, the ADU will be situated essentially in the middle with, it's fenced in on all sides around it. Behind the lot is beyond the fence and beyond a tree line lies I-95, so there's really no abutters anywhere near the, where the ADU will be. And then to that end, there will be no impact on parking in the neighborhood. The property currently has essentially two driveways, one is stacked, and so, the parking for the ADU will be, go in the existing driveway, so there will be no change. And essentially, the only kind of crux of the proposal here is the addition of an exterior stairway, and the reason for that is because there's no possibility for an interior doorway to the ADU based on the location of the entrance into the garage for size and location reasons, and also egress, which I can allow Mr. Beebe to speak to. But essentially, if, where the existing door into the garage is located now, if you were to put a staircase in that vicinity into the, upstairs to the ADU where that will be, it would essentially land it somewhere within the bathroom or the kitchen of where the proposed ADU is going to be. So, for that reason, there's really no feasible alternative that would allow for an interior door. But other than that, as I said, the, Mr. Ward has received approvals for every other aspect of this addition, including from the zoning board, who said that the ADU would not alter the character of the neighborhood. And for that, those reasons, we request that you approve this conditional use permit to allow for construction of the ADU.
Thank you, any questions? Yes.
I just want to confirm, you can get from outside into the garage and into the ADU, or only from that other outside?
You cannot. You cannot now, because, yeah, because now it's just an attic, there's no way to get up there. And there used to be a doorway, but there was a deck constructed in the rear of the house, and now that doorway has been closed off. So, the only way to get there is, will be from the side staircase.
So, does that meet all fire codes? I just want to make sure we're meeting all proper codes for access. If there's, there usually needs to be two ways in and out, just want to make sure there's going to be another window or something.
Yes, there are egress windows, which will be.
In there?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes?
Have you considered using a covered staircase? I was surprised to see that, okay, you're adding that instead of an interior door, but you could make it more interior-like by covering that staircase.
I'm not sure about that. I can, I'm sure Mr. Beebe can speak to it. I don't believe, given the, it's on the side of the house, so it's kind of connected to a deck, which will be the entrance, so I don't really believe that a covered staircase would be feasible, but I can, I can ask Mr. Beebe to speak to that if you want. I think just because it's going to be attached to sort of a deck landing, to have it be covered wouldn't really make sense.
And my other question is, when it says that the applicant does not intend to use it for business-related purposes, but later on in the application, there's a statement about that that person could live in the ADU, or another person could live in the AADU, or they could rent it. So, I'd just like an explanation of those business-related purposes, and if that includes that it will not be used as an Airbnb?
As an Airbnb, I have no, to my knowledge, no. And I know that Mr. Ward has not, doesn't have any set plans right now for what he will do with it. Right now, it's just looking for extra living space and potentially, you know, just a place for guests to stay. I think in the future, it might be his intent to rent it to a tenant, but I would assume not through an Airbnb.
Just say that that would change the character of the neighborhood. That's very different than just renting it.
Yes, to my knowledge, no Airbnb has, there's been no discussion of that.
Also not permitted, so.
Then, then no.
It's not permitted under zoning.
That should take care of it.
There you go.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah.
Public hearing on this? Anybody here who wants to speak to, for, against this application? Anybody on Zoom? Last call. Close public hearing. Proposed findings of fact? I'm finally getting with the program here.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to find that the conditional use permit application meets the criteria set forth in Section 10.814.60 and to adopt the findings of fact as presented in the staff memo.
Second.
Yeah, just to speak to that, I know it's more a second vote we're going to take regarding the modification, but I think in this case, there are no abutters to the north at all, from what I can tell. And you also have, to the rear of the lot, you also have I-95. I don't think folks driving will be disturbed by having a staircase on the outside. I think if there wasn't a direct butter right next door, then, you know, things might be a little different, but I think in this circumstance, it does work for that lot.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Findings of fact are adopted?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to grant the conditional use permit with a modification to the requirement set forth in Section 10.814.41 to not require an interior door between the principal dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling, and to approve the conditional use permit with the following stipulation, 2.1, as shown in the staff memo.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Application's approved, thank you very much. We have a request of Randy and Jeff Collins as owner and applicant for property at 77 Meredith Way, requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval to subdivide one existing lot with 22,463 square feet of lot area and 31.7 feet of street frontage into two lots, and with associated 73.3 feet of road front extension as follows. Proposed lot one with 11,198 square feet of lot area with 73 and 7,900 feet of street frontage. Proposed lot two with 11,265 square feet of lot area with 31 and 6,100 feet of street frontage. This property is on accessory map 162 lot 16 and lies in the general residence A District, LU 22-61. Who is here to present this application?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Chris Mulligan from Bozen &amp; Associates here in Portsmouth. With me, I have the Collinses, owners of the property and proponents of this project, and also Jack McTeague from TF Moran. TF Moran prepared the plan set that you have before you. So, the project is a simple two-lot subdivision. As is noted in your staff memo, earlier this year, we obtained variances for this project relating to frontage. The variance that we obtained was, I believe, to obtain one of the lots with 36 or 37 feet of frontage. As we've worked this project through TAC, the amount of roadway that we are going to increase on Meredith Way has been extended. Ultimately, we're going to extend Meredith Way almost 87 feet. You can see that on C3 in your plan set. So, the amount of non-conforming lack of frontage on lot 16.1 is actually going to be less non-conforming. There's going to be approximately 46 feet of frontage, not the 37. But the project and the proposal is to demo the existing house that's on the lot as it exists now, and extend Meredith Way 87 feet. There will be two new driveways coming off of Meredith Way to service the two new lots. And we, again, this is all on sheet C3. Significantly, we are proposing to install rain gardens on each new lot. Those are shown on sheet C4. And we believe this will have a significant beneficial effect on the area in terms of stormwater management, and obviously is a great improvement from conditions as they exist now. The, on sheet S3, also in your packet, you'll see that we will be granting the city a turnaround easement in the new driveway that is going to be on proposed lot 16-1. This is to facilitate the entry and exit of city trucks that access Meredith Way for snow removal, garbage removal, et cetera. We are also going to be requesting an easement from the city to place sewer laterals through the Pine Street Park, so we can tie into the Pine Street sewer main. Those, again, are also shown on C3. Proposed easements have been drafted and circulated to the legal department, and we're awaiting feedback on those. But obviously, the approval, any approval would be conditioned on getting those approved by the legal department and accepted by the city council. So, that is the kind of overview of the project. The staff report notes a number of conditions of approval that are recommended. All of these are essentially what we have been dealing with as we've worked this project through TAC over the last couple of months. There was an additional, a condition of approval proposed regarding a stone drip edge of six inches, which is an acceptable condition of approval to the applicant. So, we believe that this proposal is now ripe for approval, and unless you have questions for us, that's what we would request.
Thank you, questions of the applicant?
So, you showed in your packet that you're reducing, or actually, you're slightly increasing the impervious from 20,504 square feet to 28,118 square feet. Just curious, where the initial 20,504 came from? It just seems like a, kind of a high number for one dwelling in a gravel driveway.
Jack, would you be able to speak to that?
My name is Jack McTeague, I work for TF Moran with the engineers of the project. That's what we calculate, I don't know, that's, if you look at existing conditions, that's what we came up with, the existing conditions from the driveway and from the building.
Remains a mystery. Any other questions? No questions? This is a public hearing, correct?
Yes.
You haven't opened it yet.
Right, I was just about to.
Public hearing on this? Is anybody here to speak two for against this application? Anybody online? Last call. Not seeing anybody in the closed public hearing. Board discussion, action? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we vote to find the subdivision application meets the standards and requirements set forth in the subdivision rules and regulations to adopt the findings of fact as presented.
Where I was talking? Yes. Would you like to explain?
Um, I've actually, I don't know if the rest of you remember, this is actually, it was property that tried to do an unmerger, and we turned them down. And I actually, as a city councillor, called and spoke to them and suggested they move in this direction. And I think it's perfect subdivision, like meets all of our criteria. Not often do we get perfect, matching numbers, straight lines. And everything works out. I love the rain gardens. I love all the work that's been done. I think it's great. Couldn't be happier.
Much more complete, much more thorough. In favor?
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd make a motion that we vote to grant preliminary and final subdivision approval with the included stipulations 2.1 through 2.8 in the memo.
Second.
Would like to speak to that?
I've previously said it all. Yeah. I'm good.
Any other discussion? All those in, oh, yes.
I just want to understand 2.7, because it says, "Final house plans shall conform to the requirements of the zoning ordinance." But with the differences in frontage, et cetera, et cetera, the plots themselves are non-conforming. So are those two different things? Can that be said that way?
So I think that was the translation of the stipulation that was provided from the Board of Adjustment, I believe. And so I will read that one for this one, which is, hang on, let me find it really quickly.
Because it was the Board of Adjustment that granted-
Those house plans are conceptual and may change from what is presented-
For as long as they conform to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So it was, yeah, I mean, it can be verbatim, but that's, I just kind of shortened that.
Could you just say that one more time, though? I didn't hear what you read really fast.
Go ahead.
The proposed house plans are conceptual and may change from what was presented to the board as long as they conform to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. It was in our memo as part of what the CBA approved.
It is unusual, because that would be always true, so, but I think, I think it's their way of saying, it, it happens often with the Board of Adjustment, that if something changes, by the time it gets to the building plans, we've really asked them to say, "Do you mean for it to be exactly the same?" And there are times where they say, "Actually, in this case, we just, we had a conceptual idea, but we don't mean to bind them to that." So in this case, so they've offered some clarification. Because other times, we've brought it back if there's a change. We've said, "Well, that doesn't look the same. It needs to come back." So we're asking for that clarification.
So it, the Board of Adjustment leaves the variances for the non-conforming lot frontage in place? And that's why they're saying this about the house plans?
They, they sometimes do have some elevations or some basic ideas of what the house will, you know, the, I don't know exactly what's presented to the Board of Adjustment, but sometimes they are presented, because they do have to get a sense if, if it's going to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. So there are times where footprints or maybe some basic elevations are presented. But in this case, they were, I think, being very clear that they understand that it could change, and they don't want to see it come back. Because we did, we brought a couple back, and they're like, "This would have been fine." So I think they're trying to offer that extra guidance to staff.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Ready for a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought it was mine. What did I do?
Did I say this person's name? We have an application of Richard Fusigni, his owner for property located at 201 Kearsage Way. And I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Regarding preliminary and final subdivision rule to subdivide a lot with an area of 52,253, 253 square feet and 205 feet of continuous street frontage into three lots as follows. Proposed Lot 1 with an area of 17,125 square feet and 100 feet of continuous street frontage. Proposed Lot 2 with an area of 17,406 square feet and 100.2 feet of continuous street frontage. And proposed Lot 3 with an area of 17,723 square feet and 82 and 8400 feet of continuous street frontage. This property is shown on Assessor's map 218, Lot 5, and lies within, within single-family residence B District, LU 22-150. Was here to speak to this application.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Again, Chris Mulligan from Bozen &amp; Associates. On behalf of the applicant, Richard Fusigni, also who's here with me, and also project engineer, John Shagnon from Ambed Engineering. Some of you may recall, this project, this had been before this board. A couple of years ago, my late colleague, Attorney Bernie Pielich, obtained final subdivision approval of a three-lot subdivision that's very, very similar to what is before you today. But what occurred, as this project got to approval, there were some drainage, uh, infrastructure improvements to the rear of the property that would affect and essentially compromise the number of mature trees to the rear of the property, which were very important to Mr. Fusigni. And he chose and elected not to go forward with the project. Mr. Shagnon redesigned the, uh, the drainage infrastructure to, um, essentially save as many of the mature trees in the rear of the property as possible. And we proceeded with a slightly modified plan. What procedurally has happened is we went back to the Board of Adjustment earlier this year to obtain frontage relief, because one of the lots that we're proposing to create is deficient for lot frontage. But that is the only zoning relief we need. Again, this is, uh, similar to the last project. There's an existing structure on the property, which will be demoed to create three building lots. There are a couple of interesting, or a couple of significant items, and I believe they were in your packet. One is a similar turnaround easement on one of the properties in favor of the city to facilitate access. The second is a sort of conservation covenant that will run with these three properties that we've drafted and proposed that will preserve the area to the rear of the property, which was very important to Mr. Fusigni, and which we had originally thought we would convey a conservation easement to the city. But as we went through TAC, we determined that this would be a, sort of a better way to proceed. So that's kind of the project in a nutshell. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Shagnon, because he's been living with this one for several years. I will just say, on a personal level, this is the last project of Bernie's that I'm carrying around, so I'm kind of sad to see it go. But, you know, it's, it's been approved once, and I think it'll, should get approved again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. This is John Shagnon from Ambed Engineering. The proposal is to create three lots and two additional dwelling units to increase the housing stock in the city. Lots 1, 2, and 3 will contain single-family residences. And to aid in the review of this, we did conceptual home designs on each of the lots and did a complete drainage analysis. As Mr. Attorney Mulligan mentioned, we did come up with a drainage scheme in this application that saves more of the trees in the rear. The project, again, shows some utility improvements in Birch Street. These utilities will be an improvement over the current situation in Birch Street. And also, we'll be doing some pavement improvements and driveway improvement for a neighbor in Birch Street. So I guess that's all that I would add at this point, but I'm, I'm here to answer any technical questions that I'm sure some of you might have about the nuts and bolts of it. And hopefully, you'll find to approve this tonight. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Shagnon? Or anybody else? Yes?
So just to, just to clarify, the conservation easement is going to be held by the individual property owners?
It's going to be a restrictive covenant, and it's going to be on each lot. I want to still hear that.
Yeah, so what we proposed is a restrictive covenant that limits the use of that rear portion of all three of the lots. And as was suggested in the last TAC meeting we attended, we've drafted it in such a manner that all three of the lot owners have the ability to enforce it, or the city has the ability, but not the obligation, to enforce it. So it's not a conservation easement, per se, but the intent is very similar to limit the use of that area. So it's-
That makes sense, because, yeah, you can't have an easement on yourself, so.
Right.
I guess one just question. It's, you know, it seems like it's, obviously, you have some pins. You have an elm delineating where this is going to be. That elm could go away, the, you know. I just wondered if the applicant would be willing to add some sort of signage to help, because if property turns over, I think folks are going to have a hard time figuring out, "Where is this line that you speak of?"
In fact, that's a good point that you bring up. In the original iterations of the plans, there was monumentation, because we anticipated it being a formal conservation easement, like you normally see, which does have that type of, you know, signage and notice. And at my suggestion, because we weren't going to a conservation easement, I asked John Shagnon to take that off the plan. But we can certainly put it back on if you want to make that a condition. I don't, I don't think it's necessary, but.
So if we can go forward a few plans, I don't know if you noticed, that we're putting in a retaining wall, which allows us to put in the drainage features. We're raising the grade as it slopes off, so it gives us, so that's a pretty good indication on at least the two northerly lots of where that demarcation is. So if you wanted to add something on the southerly lot, that's all you would need. But I think that, that wall is going to be a pretty good border forever.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I guess I'll open the public hearing. Anybody here to speak two for against this application? Anybody on Zoom? Flickering screen means nothing. Last call. Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we vote to find that the subdivision application meets the standards and requirements set forth in the subdivision rules and regulations and to adopt the findings of fact as presented.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, it's pretty straightforward. It's very similar to back, and I, I love how they've made the change to actually put some of the area into restricted covenants. That makes me ever so happy.
The wall makes a lot of sense. Delineation.
Mr. Chairman, before you proceed to, I'd also like to direct the, the planning board. There was an additional, some stipulation revisions that were provided. They were after the publishing date, and they were updated by Public Works. And I want to, it should be in your packet at your chair. So I just wanted to refer to that as you.
And not worry, I'll read them now.
And they've even been changed since then. My apologies.
But right now, we're working on the findings of fact. So, right. We're going to mention that. Any other discussion about the findings of fact? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Findings of fact are adopted. I'm going to ask Counselor Moreau to explain the next one, because it's more complicated.
There's going to be a lot of reading here. Okay. I will vote to grant preliminary and find, I'll make a motion to vote to grant preliminary and final subdivision approval with the following stipulations. And I'm going to read through all of them, so bear with me. Property monuments shall be set as required by the Department of Public Works prior to the filing of the plat. The corners will need to be in place and evident prior to the issuance of a CO. GIS data shall be provided to the Department of Public Works in the form as required by the city. The final plat, any easements or restrictive covenants shall be recorded, the registry of deeds by the city, or as deemed appropriate by the planning department. Any site development, new or redevelopment resulting in 15,000 square feet or greater, ground disturbance will require the submission of a land use development tracking form through the pollutant tracking and accounting program online portal for more information, and it gives you the lovely link. I'm not going to read that. Next one is conditions as listed in the February 27, 2020 letter of decision to be completed as applicable. First, the drainage for lots 2 and 3 shall be incorporated into the backyard areas where they can be maintained without impacting the portion of the property designated to be a conservation area along with the following conditions. Maintenance responsibilities for the storm, uh, storm tech systems by the homeowner shall be addressed through a maintenance document that outlines the requirements to keep the system functional at all times. That document shall be recorded as part of the conservation easement deed or restrictions as deemed appropriate. Plans shall be updated to note stabilization. Construction entrances shall be installed for all three lots. System installation shall be witnessed by the city DPW during installation. The city will review the subsoils under the system to guarantee any ledge is removed to a point of 24 inches under the system, and will review all the functional parts of the system as a whole to verify the systems will work as designed. All materials used in the reconstruction of the road shall meet city standards. The plans shall note that during construction, access will be provided to all existing properties located on Birch Street. Owners shall provide an easement to allow the city to turn around in the driveway of Lot 5-4, or otherwise known on the plan as Lot 1, for the purposes of snow plowing. And the easement shall be reviewed and approved by the planning and legal departments prior to the acceptance by the city council. Do I hear a second?
A second? Easy part?
We were still listening.
Most of that was in the piece of paper that we got tonight.
There were a few little add-ins.
A few, a few little add-ins here.
Side thought of things is what I was reading.
I'm hoping Stephanie got, caught those.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Reapproved? Thank you.
Okay.
I have city council referrals is next.
Yes.
I believe City Assessor Roseanne Lentz is on Zoom.
We have a city council referral, request of Dale Whitaker, his owner for restoration of involuntarily merged lots at 880 Woodbury Avenue to their pre-merger status pursuant to our, New Hampshire RSA 674, colon 39, sub AA. Subset property is shown on Assessor's map 236, Lot 52, and lies within the single residence B District, R1ML-221.
I'd be glad to speak to it on behalf of Mr. Whitaker.
Okay, our planning director will speak to this application.
Applicant Dale Whitaker has submitted this application for restoration of involuntary merged lots, as mentioned, on 880 Woodbury Avenue. The applicant's provided some preliminary documentary support for the request, and the assessor has essentially reviewed that. At the July 11, 2022, meeting of the city council, the county voted, council voted to refer this request to the planning board and to the assessor for a report back. This falls under RSA 674, colon 39-AA, which requires council, the council to vote to restore to their pre-merger status any lots or parcels that were involuntary merged by municipal action for zoning assessing or taxation purposes. The statute further defines what that is and some of the thresholds for that. Typically, we refer this back to the assessor, who can talk a little bit, I think now, about her review and recommendation, which is also included as an attachment in your packet. And so-
Would you like to have the assessor speak to this? Was that a-
She's here, I believe.
She's online.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes, and we can see you.
Oh. So I typically do a thorough review, just to make sure that I haven't missed anything. So I have reviewed planning records, building inspection records, tax collection records, and then deeds going back on this property to 1939. And I also look to see if there was- And, I also looked to see if there was any over actions that would deem this property merged. So, everything that I have researched, everything that I've looked at, and it's explained in my memo, this property does meet the restoration of an involuntary merged lot.
Thank you. Any questions for the assessor? Thank you very much for hanging out and bearing with us.
You ready for a motion?
A quick question?
Yes.
Just a tiny bit of confusion. There was a deadline of December 31st. And, that is where we have to do it, but this guy is asking for it, correct? Or how, what's that deadline? What did that deadline mean that's different now?
So, they've removed the deadline. There is no longer a deadline for restoration of involuntary merged lot. It's ongoing forever now.
Just like magic. Thank you.
That's why we brought her in.
Someone had the answer.
Now, I think we're ready for a-
A motion? Oh, sure.
Are you, as a councillor, are you comfortable making a recommendation to council?
I am, yeah. I'll do it in person, in fact. Vote to recommend to the city council to restore the property located at 880 Woodbury Avenue to its pre-merger status, and direct city's GIS and assessing staff to update zoning and tax maps accordingly.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So recommended.
Thank you, Roseanne.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much. The only thing I'll say in closing for the evening, I said some of this at the beginning, but I would really like us all to try to work together with staff as best we can to advance the project we talked about at the beginning, especially the master plan, and, you know, I'd call on staff to work with us, and I think that we can have a really good result if we all work together with these projects. And with that, I wish you all good night.
Good night.
Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.